This conference will now be recorded.
The council meeting for the city of Hazlet for Monday, May, March the 15th, call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We do have a quorum present. Mayor Protem, do you mind leaving this in a prayer?
Sure. Father, thank you for the freedom we enjoy tonight as we come together to assess the agenda items before us. We ask that you grant us the wisdom to act in the best interest of all the citizens of Hazlet. We also ask for your continued protection for our city staff, our first responders, our teachers and our residents as we attempt to cope with the COVID-19 pandemic that risks the health of so many of us. We also ask for your blessings as we move forward from tonight's meeting. Amen.
Now, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A quick reminder on the virtual meeting best practices. Please be sure that your microphone, microphone is muted when you first join the meeting as well as when you are not speaking. This cuts down on the background noise and feedback for everyone. During the video conference and teleconference meetings, the purpose of the chat function is to have a list for the chair to recognize speakers for communicating technical difficulties or malfunctions. The chat is not a conversation, is not for conversations during official meetings. Participants should, should be sure they are recognized by the chair to speak and state their name and address prior to speaking. That's a good segue into citizens' participation and comments. Anyone wishing to be recognized at this point to make any comments?
On item number four, Mayor, I would like, if I could.
Go ahead, sir.
Just in general. This is to the council. Each of the items in 9A.
Could you identify yourself with your dress, please?
Yes, sir. This is Gary Holsey, 2003 FM 156 South Hazlet, Texas. Each of the items in 9A, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions and action items. The staff provides you, the council, a staff report and it provides background information, financial impact, recommendations, and then motion and then tying the way to vote. The staff, in my opinion, without regard to the outcome of the public hearing, to you how to vote by suggesting these motions. These suggested motions, in my opinion, did not be provided on these communiques. You were elected by your fellow citizens on the basis that you are competent enough and can determine your own motion and how to vote these items. It was my surprise, but it's consistent on every one of these items. And I implore you, and I would implore the city, that this continue the staff providing suggested motions and ways to vote. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I'm sorry, Mayor. If I could, I believe Councilmember Williams was trying to join the call.
I'm here.
Was, was my comment heard over all that static?
Yes, sir, they were, and we, we have recorded your comments. Councilmember Williams, if you could, is there any way you can mute when you are not speaking? Okay, he has done that. So hopefully that will help with the sound quality. Thank you, Mayor Golden.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, hearing no others, excuse me, we'll go on to items of community interest.
Excuse me, is this the time for me to speak on the Brumball rezoning?
Which item is that?
200.
It's the 200 acres that's being developed, Sweetwater, Sweetgrass.
Yeah, it, there's a public hearing associated with that, so you'll have an opportunity to talk through the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So items of community interest first. The John Day Road Extension Ribbon Cutting was held on March the 5th at 2021 to celebrate the road opening. As a side note on that, the following day, we had an Atmos gas line rupture just to the west of that, or excuse me, east of that intersection where, where it comes into Avondale-Hazlet Road. And we were able to, within less than 24 hours, use that road as a, as a means to get traffic east-west. They would go down John Day and then hit Blue Mound and continue east. Second item is Hazlet City Offices and Hazlet Public Library will be closed on Friday, April 2nd in observance of Good Friday holiday. Next item, monthly reports. Anybody have any questions or comments about any of the monthly reports? Hearing none, let's go to staff reports to update on active items, projects and event recaps. 7A, update on the coronavirus COVID-19 issue.
I do not believe the chief is on, so we're going, we're still in phase two. Working telecommuting is allowed. We are open from 10 to 3, as is the library, curbside pickup. We are watching the pandemic. The chief and I are evaluating the city's offices being further open and activities further open on the 1st of every month. As you probably realize, vaccinations are in full swing and there are areas of declining cases and deaths. We're being very conservative. Masks are still required in city facilities. And of course gatherings more than 10 are not, are not being approved anymore per the governor's order. But we're, we're trying to be very conservative in our approach to protect the employees and the public regarding wearing masks in facility.
Any questions or comments for Jim? If not, we'll move on to 7B, the Alliance Texas Hazlet.
You're muted.
Thank you. 7B, the Alliance Texas Hazlet Accessibility Improvement Project Monthly Report for February.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I get to start this one this month. I think Travis may go first from here on out. I only have two items to still report on as part of my, as my part of the project. We have started again. COG and TechDoc are now beginning to exchange emails and thoughts on a new construction AFA, which we've been anticipating for several months. It has been locked in those two organizations' hands, so we hope to see something coming out of them in the next 30 to 60 days on the construction AFA. At this time, we have not transferred any money to TechDoc. We are still sitting on all of that money that we have approved for it. But until that construction AFA is completed, it's going to stay in our hands. And then the other item is Phase 2 right away. We are on schedule for that. We'll discuss that later in the meeting, but I'll answer any questions you may have. And Travis will handle construction.
Anyone have any questions for Thad at this time? Okay, let's go to 7C. ATHAIP Monthly Construction Update for February 2021. Is this going to be Travis?
Yep, this will be me, as I'm sure Thad is ready to hand off a little bit of the responsibility of the project. I will be handling the construction side of things. The project officially kicked off on February 24th. They had to, they had to have something get done before March 1st, per the bill grant. That thing that they got done was the placement of traffic control devices. They're around the city now, Harmon Road, Schoolhouse Road and FM 156. The construction trailer has been placed on Harmon Road. And the major work began this last weekend. We are now seeing erosion control devices placed. They're beginning to move embankment dirt. They are clearing the area for the, the road to come through. We've had a couple of meetings with the Franchise Utilities with Encore to discuss their plan status along the Avondale-Hazlet corridor. And also, we've met with Fort Worth to discuss their section of Avondale-Hazlet. They are going to be putting that forward as part of the Tarrant County Bond Program to complete that link between 287 and 170. So wouldn't have gotten here without Thad's help, and I really appreciate that. Hopefully, we can tag team this down to the end.
We've worked well together the whole time, Travis, so, you know, I'll help you in any way I can, and you've been a big help too, so I appreciate it.
Any questions or comments for Travis? Okay, let's go down to the consent agenda. First item is the approval of the March 1st, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Second item is approving ordinance 005-2021, adding a new section 1.10.003 to Article 1.10 Boards and Commissions of the Hazlet Code of Ordinances regarding alternate member participation in voting in board and commission meetings.
I move that we have heard the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Hillborne, second.
Hillborne, seconds. Any further discussion? So roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. 9, Public Hearings, Ordnances, Resolutions and Action Items. 9A, hold a public hearing and consider an act on ordnance 006-2021, approving the service and assessment plan and the assessment role for Hazlet Public Improvement District 8, levying special assessments against property within PID number 8, providing for assessments to be paid over time in accordance with the Public Improvement District Assessment Act, specifying the method and amount of payment, providing penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, approving a reimbursement agreement between the city and the developer regarding PID number 8, and approving a PID administration services agreement with P3 Works LLC relating to PID number 8. Staff presentation.
Rob Alabon.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll take the lead on this. I know we have a lot of people online, your PID, your PID committee members, the developer, developer's attorney and the PID consultant, who all may want to pitch in, but I'll, I'll take a, the first run through the presentation here. So, Council, if you'll recall, on March 1st, the council created PID District number 8 for the Sweetgrass development. Subsequently, the city published notice of authorization in the creation of the PID as required by the statute. Also, on that night, March 1st, the council accepted the preliminary service and assessment plan for PID number 8 and established tonight, March 15th, as a public hearing to consider approval of the final service and assessment plan and the assessment roles for PID number 8. So notice of tonight's public hearing was published in the newspaper and sent to each owner of property liable for an assessment as required by the PID statute. What we're going to do tonight, then, is the PID statute requires that the council hold a public hearing to consider the final service and assessment plan and the assessment roles and provide an opportunity for persons to, to address the proposed service and assessment plan and any questions that, that they might have. The developer, as the future landowner or the future owner of all the property that will be liable for the assessments, has consented to the proposed assessments. After we hold a public hearing, then, the council will be asked to approve the proposed ordinance levying the assessments. The ordinance makes certain findings, and if you've been through that ordinance, you'll, you'll recognize these, plus this is the same process the council has been through on the other PIDs that the council created. So the findings that the council needs to make are that the method of apportioning the costs of the authorized improvements against the assessed property is just and equitable, that the method of apportioning the cost will produce substantially quality considering the benefits received by and the burdens imposed upon the assessed property, and that the assessments levied against the property and the owners thereof are just and equitable. So again, this is the same thing you've done on the other PIDs that the city's created. In addition, tonight, this ordinance approves the reimbursement agreement for this PID, which, as you will recall from the other PIDs, is the contract between the developer and the city that provides if the developer builds the infrastructure, that the, builds the infrastructure in accordance with all the city standards, that the developer will be entitled to be reimbursed for the portion of the cost as, as set forth in the reimbursement agreement. The city is not obligated to reimburse the developer from any other source other than from the PID assessments from the PID district itself. Once the infrastructure improvements have been completed, they'll be dedicated to the city as public improvements, as in, as in any development. And the proposed agreement spells out the details and terms of how the reimbursement to the developer will occur. Your subcommittee and staff has been through the ordinance to, to approve the SAP and the levy of the assessments and the reimbursement agreement. And then also, finally, the ordinance approves the PID Administration Services Agreement with P3 Works. As you know, P3 Works is, has, has served as the city's PID administrator and consultant on the other PID districts that the city has created. And with regard to this district, PID 8, the city is in need of those management services, the administration services to ensure compliance with the service and assessment plan and the reimbursement agreement and the PID statute. And so the attached agreement from P3 Works outlines the duties to be performed and the costs therefore. And also, as in the previous PIDs, all expenses for the PID administration are either paid through the developer's escrow of funds with the city or from the PID assessments themselves. So this is not funded through the city's general fund. Again, your subcommittee has been through all these documents and recommends approval. Before, I guess the next step would be to open the public hearing, Mayor, but before we do that, that's kind of my presentation, but again, I would ask if the subcommittee members, city staff, developer, the developer attorney or the PID consultant have anything to add that I've missed or anything that they think might be needed to be added?
So anyone from the developers team, P3 Works or others on the city staff, have anything that they want to add to Rob's summary? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against ordnance 006-2021?
Yes, sir. This is Mayor, this is Gary Holsey, FM 156 South Hazlet, Texas. I would like to speak.
Go ahead.
I, I oppose this. I ask the council to reject it. And it's on the basis of my other proposals. On page 14 of the Concrete Hints Plan, and, and the approval of the PID goes to the approval of the development plan and your preliminary plat coming up. But page 14 of the Comprehensive Plan defines Hazlet's identity and emphasizes half acre to one acre lots. It's in writing. Then, if you go to page 66, the Comprehensive Plan by coincidence uses 224 acres of this development, this same development, to do an example of the application of our Comprehensive Plan with regard to our standards.
Mr. Holsey, can I stop you for a minute, sir? Do you have anything to speak to ordnance 006-2021?
Yes, I do, and I'm giving you the foundation of it.
Okay.
May I continue?
Yes, sir.
And that approval of that plan or that, of that page 66, if the council would look at it, if your planning people would look at it, if the attorney would look at it, does state and define what gross maximum density is. For this 207, 224 acres as the example. It's 224 homes. How do you squeeze another almost 200? Homes in that. So based on that, that none of this was in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, therefore not the local government code, I reckon, I, I ask the council to reject this approval of this PID.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I'm also sure that if the planning director or the city attorney thought that we were not in compliance with the city ordinances, they would have certainly brought that to our attention. And what I sense here is a difference in opinion on how to interpret what's written in the comp plan. You can pull out your little excerpts as much as you want, sir, but I believe that the planner and the city attorney will back me. And in fact, I'll ask them, Wes, Rob, is there anything in, in, in anything we've done up to now that's illegal and against our ordinances?
I'll, I guess, since Wes didn't chime on yet, let me, let me say no. I think, I think, as has been pointed out last time, a reference to the comp plan was brought up and has been discussed in all of the previous PIDs that have been approved by the city that are very similarly structured to this one. The comp plan gives the council the ability to approve a development such as this, and I, I, I don't have any issue or concern with regard to the issues that were raised here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against ordnance 006-2021? Hearing none, I'll close.
Good evening, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Hillborne. I, I think that Mr. Morrison was, was about to contribute to the conversation, but you may not have seen him indicate that.
I didn't, but if, if you're ready, sir, go ahead.
I, I really had nothing further to add. I just, since you called on me, I wanted to make sure you know I was still, I was here, and I agree completely with what Rob said. You asked a legal opinion question and, and you got a legal answer. That's all I had to add.
Okay. Was there anyone else who wished to speak for or against this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor. This is Cory Admire. 9406 Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas 75218, with a law firm of Shute Ventura, PLLC. And I am authorized to speak on behalf of 100% of the landowners of the proposed Public Improvement District, I'm sorry, of the Public Improvement District on the proposed assessments and would speak in favor of the levy of the assessments.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? At this time, I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration and action on the recommendation. Comments, thoughts, anyone?
Mayor, I will make a motion if no one has any discussion to bring up.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I move that the council approve ordinance number 006-2021, approving the service and assessment plan and assessment roles for Hazlet Public Improvement District number 8, levying special assessments against property within PID number 8, approving the reimbursement agreement between the city and the developer regarding PID number 8, and approving the PID Administration Services Agreement with P3 Works LLC relating to PID number 8.
Is there a second?
Harold, seconds.
Harold, seconds. Any further discussion? Still a roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. 9B, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a preliminary plat of 294 acres situated in the Eldridge-Hopkins and WM Scott surveys, resulting in 494 single-family lots and 14 open space common areas. The property is generally located north of Blue Mound Road, approximately one mile east of FM 156 and a half mile west of Harmon Road within the city of Hazlet, Tarrant County, Texas.
Wes Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Councilmembers. This is a preliminary plat for Sweetgrass Development. As you well recall, back in January, the city council approved the plant development zoning for this subdivision. The plat meets the requirements of that, of that zoning. It does provide for 494 single-family residential lots, also 14 common space lots. Part of the preliminary plat review staff looks at the preliminary utility and drainage improvements and found those to be in compliance with city standards. Also, as you know, the, if staff reviews the preliminary plat and finds it to be in compliance with zoning and all city and state's regulations, then this is really just an administrative approval. It is essentially approved by law, so, and I'll let the attorney speak to that in, in more detail if you'd like, but Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this plat by a vote of 5 to 0, and I can answer any questions that you have.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this preliminary plat?
Hi, this is Sandra Radford, 637 Blue Mound Road E. We are not in the city of Hazlet. All we are wanting to do is for the city and the developer to be a good neighbor to us. I feel like we're, we're trying to do what we need to do. We are not getting any kind of communication or feedback. Our driveway was changed when the road came in, and we've had issues with that. I've talked to someone with the city. I've talked to the developer. I have made ourselves and our concrete guy available to meet and get this resolved, and I've had no, no communication regarding that. I do notice the developer went out and did kind of a temporary fix. Basically, what happened is we had a mudslide come through our driveway, and I think something more permanent needs to be done. If anybody goes out there, I don't think anybody would think what's there now would be accessible if it were your property. Also, the developer told P&amp;Z that he spoke with our engineer regarding the, the water study that they did. Our engineer mentioned that he's had no conversations with the developer. He did say the water study looked good, but there's a possibility that we will have water issues once sprinkler systems start going into these homes. So I'm just trying to figure out if we get to that point, who am I to get with to kind of get that issue resolved? Also, as the land is getting developed next to our property, we had Texas Parks and Wildlife out there, and they mentioned that working on that land could cause erosion issues on our side. Again, I'd like to know if that does come up. Who am I to get with that will respond and help me work through that situation? Again, like I said, we are not in the city, but we are trying to be good neighbors, and we are hoping that you guys and the developer do the same thing. The developer keeps telling us that he's working with us. He's only saying that I'm not seeing anything that he is doing to help us out. All we want to do is to be made whole when all this is said and done and he's moved on. We are concerned about what's going to be done right on our property line, and if he has something done, we need some sort of protection. When this is all turned over to the HOA, that we have some sort of protection, that what the developer has done and we agreed to. upon can't be undone, and then we start this process all over again. So-
Ms. Radford, thank you. Your time is up.
Ms. Radford, if you would just email me, J Q I, I'm sorry, J Q U I N at haslett.org, and list everything you just said, I'll, I'll, I'll get with the developer and the city engineer and see if we can't meet your satisfaction.
Is there one, excuse me, is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against this preliminary plat?
Yes, sir. This is Gary Holsey, two thousand and three FM one fifty-six South Haslett, Texas. I would, sir.
Go ahead.
On the basis, again, that this project is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan, I do object to it. I do want to make a comment to the lady that just spoke. Even though you're not in the city of Haslett, you are in the city of Haslett's extraterritorial jurisdiction, so they should be helping champion this issue for you. But nonetheless, again, given that this project has not been, and I understand the attorney and the planner's comment, it is not in keeping with the identity of Haslett. It's not in the intent or the spirit of the document. You just, as some council people have said it before, they've learned how to get around it. That's a poor way to do business. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this preliminary plat? At this time, I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration, and action on the recommendation. Anyone have any thoughts, questions, comments? Hearing done. Is anyone ready for a motion then?
Mayor, this is Patricia Hillborn. I move to approve the preliminary plat for Sweetgrass.
Is there a second?
Mark seconds.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Excuse me. Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Nine C, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a site plan amendment to relocate the more than ten parking spaces at the Haslett Central Fire Station. The property is generally located on the east side of Blue Mound, excuse me, the east side of FM one fifty-six, approximately thirteen hundred feet north of FM one fifty-six and Blue Mound Road intersection, more commonly known as seventeen oh one South FM one fifty-six in the city of Haslett.
This will be Travis. I'll announce the hour.
Go Travis.
And Wes. I think Wes is, he may lead the discussion. I'll, I'll fill in where, where needed.
Sure. This is a site plan amendment for the fire station, Haslett Fire Station, primarily due to the widening of one fifty-six. As y'all know, this is also located in your strategic plan, so city engineer provided a new site plan for the parking. The widening, while it's not directly taking any parking spaces, it is affecting some maneuverability and drive aisles. Currently, the Haslett Fire Station was developed in two thousand and four with eleven parking spaces provided for in front of the building, and then non-parking spaces provided for in the back of the building. With the widening, the changes are going to affect approximately three spaces, and due to some parking shortage and other, other reasons at the fire station, the revised site plan adds a total of twenty-three spaces on the north side of the building, making a total count for the parking station to be thirty-five, adding those with the, in the back. The, the proposed amendment meets the compliance of the landscaping requirements and parking requirements for the city zoning ordinance, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a five to zero vote.
Sorry, Wes. I just went to Travis and see design it.
So I'll add to the discussion that this is primarily, the fire station is, is underparked right now. If you've ever been there on a training night, people are just kind of parked everywhere, even up on the grass sometimes. Also, in the comprehend, in the, no, strategic plan, there is a call for that facility to be converted to a public works facility sometime in the future. Public Works does have a lot of extra needs for parking spaces between equipment and also vehicles. So this, this is addresses a need that is driven by both, both fire department and the expansion of FM one fifty-six. I did include the schematic sixty percent design for FM one fifty-six right there. This is subject to change. Those right-of-way lines are subject to move. It just all depends on, on how it works out. Once they get to a hundred percent design, just like on Hasla Parkway, things have, have changed even up to today. So this is the best information available now. It looks like the best way to handle this is to add those spaces to the north of the station there.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this site plan amendment?
Yes, Mayor, this is Gary Holsey, two thousand and three FM one fifty-six South Haslett, Texas. I would like to speak, please.
Go ahead.
The, one, I, I understand the need, and I can see as well as others, you know, when the volunteers are up there for training, like, I don't know, once a month or however often that was or is, that, yeah, there isn't over parking. But if, if the motivation is won by TechStop's intent to expand one fifty-six drives the movement of this, and then also if the intent is anticipating Public Works parking their equipment here, I think that'd be rather unsightly, parking all that equipment up there. I mean, it's handsome equipment to others that like that stuff, but general passing by, there would be no security for it. I would think your parking lot would be better served placed behind the fire station if you're anticipating converting this to a public works facility where the equipment would be behind the facility and not seen. The other is TechStop should participate in this. I, I, I assume the city's just going to give them the right-of-way, but why should we bear the full cost of something that's being compounded by a widening of a TechStop project? Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else wishing to speak for or against this site plan amendment?
Yes, this is Kitty Wertz at two oh five Thistle Drive, and I would like to, to second the comments that Gary made on this. My question is, why would Haslett bear this cost of moving that parking lot? Does anyone have a good answer to that question? If it's, if it's for the widening of the road, why does Haslett have to pay for this? Secondly, why wouldn't it be in the back of the building? This building may very well need to be expanded sideways. Why would we take the best real estate of the property and put a parking lot in that we may have to rip out just a few years down the road? Does it make a lick of sense to me, just putting my two cents in? I think this is ill-advised, and I'm against it. Again, my address is two oh five Thistle Drive.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this site plan amendment?
This is Jeff Armstrong at two oh eight Thistle Drive. I would like to, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, if, if TechStop is driving the need for this, why wouldn't they be part of paying for this in some way? And that's kind of my, my comment, and I think they should be, if the driving need for this movement or to move this parking lot is driven by the TechStop widening of one fifty-six. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Answer that question?
I'm sorry, anyone else wishing to speak for or against this site plan amendment? Okay, I'm going to take this. The mayor, I'm going to take a couple of minutes here. The reason the parking lot is on our agenda is because they're parking on the grass right now, because there isn't enough room on Tuesday nights and on weekends, and whenever we have more than whatever those number of slots are in the front, eight or ten slots, we don't have enough room to park right now. One of the reasons we can't expand behind the fire station, as the former mayor very clearly knows, is the sixteen acres behind the fence behind the fire station was the dedicated parkland property and can't be used for anything else but parkland. So we can't make a parking lot for the fire station or for Public Works behind that fence behind the fire station. Yes, FM one fifty-six does have an impact on this, and what we're trying to do is get ahead of that and go ahead and get our parking lot done now because we already need it. I did close the public hearing. Is that correct?
I don't-
No, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. Thank you. Onto discussion, consideration, and action on the recommendation.
This is the mayor pro temp. Might also mention that, you know, the city owns this piece of property, so that makes it convenient to be able to build something on it, so they don't have to acquire it. We own it already. I'd like to ask Travis, I noticed this is pretty significant grade difference between the parking lot site and the existing fire station site. How's that going to be handled? Is there going to be stairs? Are you going to bring it up with filled dirt, or how are you going to handle that?
Yeah, so there's a, a pretty good grade change, as you mentioned. The way I've got it planned right now is it's about a five percent grade difference from, from one end to the other, which is, is, it's, it's kind of, you know, steep, but it also makes for good drainage. Five percent is, is kind of what a sidewalk is, if you're ever walking on it kind of longitudinally. So it's, it, it's walkable. It's not like you're walking up a steep hill or anything. The area right up close to the building, that's graded at a two percent slope, so that it, if it never needed to be accessible parking for handicap spaces, it could be. So there will be probably a little bit of filled dirt in there. We've got actually abundant to fill dirt right now from the Hasla Park project, so I don't think we'd be purchasing dirt per se, but we did have that area surveyed. So the way I've got it designed right now, it's pretty accurate as to how much dirt would be needed, but it should be a pretty gentle slope in that parking lot.
That answer your question? Okay, Warren?
Yes, yeah. Thank you very much. I figured you had a plan.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Hearing done. If you're ready, I would entertain a motion.
This is Clark. I move to approve the site plan amendment for the Haslett Fire Station as recommended.
Is there a second?
Counting Morrow seconds.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Still a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Nine D, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a final plat of Lot Three, Block One, in the LaTerra Town Center subdivision, being one point zero two nine acres, generally located southwest of the Abidale Haslett Road and FM one fifty-six intersection.
Wes Morrison?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. You'll recall back in January, the council approved a site plan for a minor automobile, automobile repair facility on this subject property. This is the final plat. Staff has reviewed the, this is a one-lot plat, and staff has reviewed all civil and infrastructure plans for the lot and found it to be in compliance with city's design requirements and subdivision ordinance, as well as the Texas Local Government Code. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. I can answer any questions that you have.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this final plat? Hearing done. I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration, and action on recommendation.
I'll make a motion if everybody's ready.
Go ahead and try.
Okay, I move to approve the final plat for Lot Three, Block One, LaTerra Village subdivision as recommended.
Is there a second?
Air pro ten seconds.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Nine E, continued from a previous meeting, discuss, consider, and act on authorizing a project to convert the sand volleyball cart court in the community park to a net sport hard surface.
This would be Travis.
You have the floor, Travis.
Thank you. Good evening again. This project has evolved initially from converting the volleyball court surface to a multi-sport court, to a single tennis court, to now looking at a double tennis court in the area. This court that is presented before you is a double tennis court overlapping the old volleyball court, relocating a bit of the trail in the park, removing some trees, and also angled at the optimum angle for tennis. And I believe Ms. Barbara Long is on from the park board as well. She was the one that has given me the information for the court and how, how to rotate it, which is greatly appreciated. My degree's in engineering, not, not tennis courts, but I have learned a lot about it over the past couple, couple meetings, actually past couple years. So the original budget item on this was seventy-five thousand. As stated in a previous meeting, I think that that could, could get a single tennis court in there. I did prepare an engineer's opinion of probable cost on this one, and those numbers are fairly certain to me. There's a very small contingency on it, ten percent. Those numbers came from a bid that happened in two thousand and eighteen in the Woodlands. It's an average of those, of those bid numbers, and then adjusted slightly for inflation, and actually, they went up in inflation and down in inflation due to the COVID. So it's, it's a slight adjustment, and then also adjusted for the fact that this is in North Texas and not in the Houston area, so there's a little bit of a cost difference that occurs there. So this, this estimate ends up to be just under two hundred thousand dollars. There's a couple things to note in the estimate that if council were to go forward with this project, I would like to obtain a topographic survey of the land and actually engineer it. The Woodlands tennis courts, they just put out a basic bid item that said, come make this tennis court, put it next to this other one, and that was it. That was their extent of engineering. This one I would actually engineer to make sure that the, the grading is right, to make sure that the angle of the court is right, that path, to make sure that it's- That path, uh, to make sure that it's it's still ADA accessible. Uh, the other thing to note in the in the item is that the the caliper inches of trees, uh, that has to do with the tree ordinance of the city that if there are protected trees, uh, in the area, that those have to be replaced, uh, caliper inch for caliper inch, so there's there's seven inches of American elms that would be replaced, uh, need to be replaced. Uh, the other trees that would be taken down are hackberry and mesquite, those are, those do not show up on the protected tree list. Uh, so, uh, when, uh, park board was last Wednesday, they did again express their desire to take funds that were not expended on events for this item, uh, worked with Marcy a little bit to figure out what those funds are. There's two basic funds for the park, there's a park fund revenues, uh, which is mostly underwritten by the city council when the the transfer happens from the general fund to the park fund. Because some of the events float over the year, such as Christmas in the park and the Easter egg hunt, it's not recommended to really dip into that fund for uh, any type of extra activities, so even, let's say, even though Wild West Fest didn't happen, it has a budget of twenty thousand dollars uh, revenue, but it also has an expense of forty thousand dollars, so that's not client, you can't just say, oh, throw this twenty thousand over there and it works. The other part of the park improvement is the city, the city park improvement fund revenues, which is, uh, what developers pay. Uh, when they, when they develop a lot, there's a a park fee that is charged to to, uh, basically every new home that's coming in, every new commercial development that's coming in. That fund, uh, right now is budgeted to have an additional thirty-two thousand dollars at the end of the year, uh, which could be applicable to to this project. So if you have the the seventy-five thousand and you add the thirty-two thousand, you're at about one oh seven. So we're still, uh, in this, I, in this ideal world, uh, short of the two hundred thousand dollars to put these double tennis courts in. Uh, but that's up to council if if they want to fund that from some other place or take it out of the park fund revenues, uh, that's that's up to council, so staff is seeking a path forward to either go with the double tennis courts or to go back to the single tennis court. Just, uh, let us know what we should do and we'll be happy to move forward with this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Uh, Jim, this is the mayor, uh, do you have any other, uh, pockets that you can, uh, search for, uh, or upwards of a hundred thousand dollars to help us get the second court?
We were having a tremendous year regarding permitting, sales tax. We could take money out of the general reserve fund, which is just accumulating to the strategic plan anyway. Do you agree with that, Marcy?
Yes, um, that right now, that's about the only other source I can think of that it could come from.
How about type A and type B funds?
We we have discussed that, uh, that is, uh, looking into how I present that to the board. Uh, but I I don't know if they have approved that or not.
We can bring it up for a discussion item at, uh, next week's meeting and if that's, uh, if that's something y'all desire and then we can put it on. Waiting for Rob to give me the thumbs up on how we would do that, but we can move that forward. Um, I've done some calculating and the EDCs have been, you know, very careful waiting for the road project. We've got a lot more certainty, so they may be looking for a project that's exciting and invisible.
And for anybody on the call that's not aware of it, uh, th- this is a an approvable of, uh, expense for type B and a couple of years ago, the legislature, uh, made a change and and, uh, our city council has adopted that change in that type A can, uh, can take on any project that type B has approved and that if that's not exactly correct, if if you correct me there, I'd sure appreciate it.
So that is corrected, we have a public hearing requirement, um, to take on those projects, but other than that, you are one hundred percent correct. A can do B projects and they have shown an interest in the past.
They're accommodating for revenue, some general fund and some EDC. There is a path forward.
So council, what I would suggest you consider is is, uh, number one, uh, I would, I would lean toward, if I were voting and I'm not, I would lean toward the the two the two court project versus the one court. Uh, I would also, um, think based on what Jim's very, very cursory comment earlier about about having a good year, uh, yes, even with the pandemic and the downturn, the economy Haslett's in the middle of a growth spurt right now and uh, w- we, we are as healthy as we've ever been at this particular moment in time. So what I would suggest you consider is to possibly cover the the additional expense out of the ju- general fund with the understanding that we're gonna go to type A and type B and request them to consider this as a project that they would undergo and underwrite it from type A and type B. Just to remind everybody, this is actually a project that we were trying to get completed last year and for for numerous reasons, uh, it it didn't happen. And and I know we have some some folks who are, um, probably bouncing tennis balls off their garage doors right now, waiting for us to get our our tennis courts built. So I would, uh, I would encourage us to be, uh, as positive as we can toward this project and and, uh, I would be in favor of of two courts and going ahead with it and, uh, see if we can't get get the final engineering done, get it bid. And, uh, in the meantime, we can be working with our EDCs to figure out if they can help us in the in the, uh, the funding of it.
And this is Councilman Ramaro, I I agree with everything you said, um, mayor, I I do think two courts is just makes more sense than doing one. And I also know that this has been something tennis courts have been discussed for years. Um, I also think adding the the pickleball lines to the tennis court to make it that multi, you know, court use, um, can free up some of the the concerns within the basketball, basketball wants wants to play and pickleball's going on. So I I agree, um, I did have one question, so the seventy-five thousand that's budgeted and then we're saying also pull out the thirty-two from the impact fee and then that ninety is what's going to be, um, left or around ninety, ninety-five from general fund, is that correct? On the math?
Yes, ma'am, I think that is correct.
Yes, yes, I'm in favor for it as well.
And we share the cost of the EDC in the general fund reserve if the EDCs agree.
Travis, as an aside, I I I thought I saw somewhere where there was only going to be one gate and and I, uh, I I'd like to get Barbara Long to chime in here. Um, I know tennis etiquette doesn't really, uh, doesn't really allow folks to walk across the back of one's court to get to the second court and I would I would think that we'd be better off if we had two gates, you know, on, you know, I I don't know where you'd want to put them, but on, you know, where you could accommodate e- each each court from a separate gate. But Barbara, if you're on the call and have any comments about gates, I I'd sure appreciate it.
Hi, yes, this is Barbara Long, one twenty-one Schreiber Drive in Haslett. Um, yes, it, I mean, it would be better and if they're moving that sidewalk around to the west side, it could be that a little, you know, a little additional sidewalk could lead to the gate on the west side of the court. It would be better to have two courts or else have us, if you were gonna have a single gate, it would need to to kind of be placed between the the two courts, maybe at the south end. That would, that would be the only way, I think you could have only a single gate, otherwise you would need to. And I think, uh, Travis has done a good job in his drawing of, um, utilizing the little sidewalk that's already there that would actually lead to the gate on the east side of the courts. And it might be possible that whoever does the the bids, they might, you know, while the ideal orientation is seventeen degrees either uh, to the east or the west of due north, it may be that anywhere in between that seventeen degrees and due north might, if if that would make it fit a little better on our space and, um, and maybe save a little of the additional cost of the sidewalk, that might be a possibility that I would be willing to to concede and I think it would be acceptable as long, you just can't go east-west. You can't have an e- east-west orientation. Uh, but I think I addressed that about the sidewalks and I I went out there today and just looked, I I think the mesquite tree is dead. So that tree loss is probably already a loss. I'll just mention that, it looks dead to me.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is Mayor Pro Tim, yeah, mesquite trees are not on the, uh, the tree list, so we don't have to worry about that one, but, um, are lights planned for this or not?
At this time, lights were not included, uh, with the cost estimate.
But is that, uh, something that could be added later, should the the park board think they would want to do that?
Yes, and we're actually looking into that, the electrical in that area anyways, uh, in upgrading it to eventually move Christmas in the park over that direction. So yes, that would be considered, uh, in the future.
So just one last question, uh, I'm not a tennis player, so I this is totally new to me, but, uh, how do people, uh, queue up to use these courts? I mean, do we, do we have fights over, okay, I'm next or? How does that work?
This is Barbara Long again. Well, I've gone out to Roanoke to play, they have a two court system and there have been times when I've got got driven out there and both courts were filled and so I would drive somewhere else to go play tennis. And so, um, there's really, on any courts that I know of, there's not a really a reservation system. It's just kind of first come, first served and if you know somebody's waiting, then you you know, don't dilly-dally and drag out your game, you try to finish up so that the next group can can have access to the court. And that's why it's better to have two than one, because usually you have a group of four that's playing. And so, um, you know, usually you're not gonna bring out eight people unless you're having an event, which would have to be scheduled then through the city.
And just to add. Uh, just to add, I did hear from, uh, Kurt Chief Mays, uh, that there will would most likely require two entrances, so that would, uh, be something that was shown in the engineering plans.
Thank you, sir.
So this is Mayor Pro Tim again, uh, what kind of motion do we need to go forward with this?
I don't know if it's necessarily a motion, it's more just provide staff direction, if this is the direction that the council wants to to go, we will go ahead and and get the survey going and, uh, get moving forward uh, to bring you a big package in the future.
So if, oh, if there's no further discussion, I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I I move that we, uh, advise staff to move forward to get this project, uh, uh, facilitated, uh, and, uh, the the engineering, uh, work done and the survey made and, uh, the funding, uh, procured.
Harold seconds.
Thank you, sir, any further discussion? Hearing done.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
So can, uh, can we assume with the motion and the second that Travis will be able to go ahead and do the and and engineer the project the way he, uh, asked? Or he said would be the better way to do it?
Travis, do you want to comment on that?
Uh, with that, I've got enough connection to go forward with it, I'll get the survey ordered, um, this week.
So I, I would assume when making my motion that the seventy-five thousand that's already budgeted would get, would go toward those kinds of expenses, well, we're working out the details of where to get the balance from.
Yes, sir.
That's my assumption, making a motion. Uh, was there a second?
Yes, sir, there was.
Okay.
There's still a roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, this is Chrissy Gray with two-two-six Wimberly Drive. I just wanted to ask, has there been studies done to see?
Can I, can I stop you, please? It, we're, we're, we're past the point where we can take public input in that we we have a motion and a second on the floor and and if from this point forward, any discussion?
I don't, there wasn't an opportunity for public input on this, I've been on the call the whole time. Uh, one gentleman spoke, then that was it.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Has there been studies done to see how many families will utilize one or two tennis courts versus other types of sports facilities? Namely, the baseball field, softball field, soccer fields versus, uh, tennis? Um, I I've moved from a community of ten thousand plus homes that had four tennis courts and I can honestly tell you that rarely was anybody out there, people that play tennis, play at Lifetime or the Keller Fitness Tennis Facility or their children play at school. Haslet is growing at a substantial rate and families that moving in, their four-year-old's not gonna play tennis, their four-year-old wants to play softball, T-ball, soccer. Um, I feel it's kind of frivolous to pull funds from other funds and direct them towards one specific sport when these could be used better by the Parks and Rec Department.
And and that's really the beauty behind the design of this particular project is it's a tennis court, a pickleball court, pickleball courts, excuse me, you could probably get two, if not four, pickleball games going on one tennis court. And I believe there was a third, Tanya, somebody help me, there was a third, uh, option between tennis and pickleball on these courts.
Right, but four, five, six-year-olds are not playing tennis or pickleball. Um, Haslet has the opportunity for organized sports, um, but it seems to be lacking over at the fire station field. Um, I think these funds could be directed, use the seventy-five for the single tennis court, but the funds that you're willing to pull from other places, use them to light the baseball field so those programs can grow and generate funds for the city, for the children of Haslet to play here in Haslet and represent Haslet rather than going to surrounding communities for organized sports.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Nine F, discuss, consider and act on a possible water account adjustment and winter average for sewer charges as a result of the February winter storm, the week of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, sir, uh, Marcy and I got together and we devised a plan that would uh, provide some relief for the residents who, uh, ran water during the freeze regarding winter average, two thousand gallons forgiveness. Uh, but let me let Marcy go in detail about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, due to the storm, there was a lot of, um, news in the news, uh, about different cities and and different things, um, depending on how hard they were hit, we're making adjustments to water bills and then particularly the winter sewer average for sewer bills. We belong to a round table for utility billing issues and it was pretty active the week following the storm. There were several different, uh, approaches used by different cities. And, uh, so as Mr. Quinn mentioned, he and I got together, we looked at, um, because we were actually doing billing next week, we had the readings, we had the usage, um, we could see, uh, what the impact of the storm had had and pretty much real time. We did use quite a bit of additional water, um, in our February readings than we had in December and January. And it, so it does appear that, you know, one, we had us, we had a freezing storm, two, most if not all of the city lost power, uh, some for an extended period of time, some on a rolling blackout basis, but that just compounded the need for many of our residents. But that just compounded the need for many of our residents to drip water in their faucets and try to protect their, um, internal system and their homes. It just, you know, as you talk about a perfect storm, the timing of it was right as we would be calculating, um, our winter sewer average. And that's what, um, we base future, um, new homes coming on, what their average would be until they establish their own usage history, as well as each of the residents, their own individual average applies. And so, um, I put a lot of details into the report about water usage compared to years past. And we'd normally calculate the sewer average on a three-month average using, um, December, January, and February usages. So we calculated it using the three-month average that we would normally use. And then we calculated it using the two-month average. Um, several cities that, um, were participating in the roundtable were indicating that they were going to go to a two-month average, um, just for this particular year. Um, it's pretty much an industry standard that the three-month is used. And so we saw several, several cities going to the two-month. The caveat on the winter sewer average, um, it, it's pretty unique to the resident and the homeowner of the resident. You can't necessarily, I mean, I can't tell you that if we make that adjustment between a three-month average to the two, that every customer is going to save money. Some of them will and some of them may not. It just depends on their own individual usage patterns, um, the square footage of their home, you know, just certain things that direct their water usage. So, um, it is thought that overall it will save the majority of our customers some money to change our sewer average to the two-month. And so, um, we have recommended that we do that. The, um, water adjustment, we have, um, we have not had, um, at the time of the report, we'd only had two, um, customers, one residential, one commercial approach us about, um, an adjustment for a water leak that they had. Um, we have a water leak adjustment policy in place already. And so we did not feel that, uh, we really needed to adjust it. We do have from time to time, um, different customers have problems and have leaks. And so that's always an option whenever the customer has a leak to contact us. And we would apply the policy that we have in place, uh, to the leak adjustment. Um, what we're asking for though is we, as I mentioned, the last bills that went out in the first week of March did include the usage from the storm. And so, um, if customers were not previously aware that they had a leak, so maybe they didn't have, you know, just a, a major flooding incident, but they might've had something that's a slow leak that perhaps they hadn't discovered yet. But at least they had their bills in hand to see. But once again, because of the nature of the storm with the freezing and then having to allow time for things to thaw out, uh, some of, some things people may not have even attempted yet to use. And when they do, um, further, you know, incidents may happen that cause leaks, uh, as well as some customers that may have had a leak could be still working with their insurance companies to figure out, you know, what's, what's the next step in getting their damage repaired and, and getting back to living. And they may not have even thought about applying for water leak adjustments. So what we're asking on our leak adjustment policy is just to allow Mr. Quinn to have the leeway, um, on more of a case-by-case basis to determine if there were extenuating circumstances that, um, we, uh, may deviate in some fashion from the, the policy that we normally use. The policy we normally use, um, takes the difference in usage from the leak to, you know, where their three-year average for that same timeframe, that same month, and, um, only charges the customer for about 30% of the usage from the leak. So that equates to about a 70% refund. So our recommendation, um, unless you have any questions on any of the, the details of water usage or whatever, we did feel that because of, um, the need to leak or not leak, but drip water, um, in the faucets for an extended period of time, uh, we looked at, um, giving a credit for a 2,000 gallon water usage. 2,000 gallons is really what is considered our minimum usage. And so each customer in the city would be billed that minimum regardless of, um, if they used, you know, 10,000 gallons or 2,000 gallons, they would be charged the minimum. And then the bill increases from that, um, point on. So we figured this would benefit all customers, whether they normally use a lot of water or if they use little water, if they were dripping faucets, um, they could have very easily, um, seen this type of increase in their bill. So we're recommending, uh, a refund on their next bill or an, an adjustment for 2,000 gallons at the minimum charge of $28.91. And then we're also recommending that we base the winter sewer average for 2021 on a two-month average. And that the citywide average be set at 7,000 gallons. The 7,000 gallons only applies to, um, residential that is new, where no customer has been there before to establish service and allows us to apply an average, um, for their sewer bill. So the 7,000 gallons would not be across the board to every customer. As I mentioned before, each customer has their own established, uh, usage patterns. And so their own individual average would be used for two months. And those are our recommendations. And I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Marcy, any comments?
Yes, so Marcy, you say two months. You mean December and January and omit February, correct?
That's correct. I'm sorry, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, this is the Mayor Pro Tim. I'm, I'm in favor of this. I, I've seen on the news where other cities have done this. You know, I think although, you know, it may not matter much, but it's, it's something, uh, goodwill toward our citizens and our customers. That kind of shows the city cares, um, rather than doing nothing. I think it's worthwhile to do something. So that's my recommendation as we move forward with this.
Any other questions or comments? Warren, do you want to turn that into a motion?
Sure, I move to approve a one-time adjustment to customer water bills in the amount of $28.91. They, and based the 2021 winter sewage average on the two-month average of, uh, December and January and set the citywide winter sewer average for new, uh, meters at 7,000 gallons.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Councilmember Morrow.
Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. 9G, discuss, consider an act upon bid results for the community park upper trail crossing.
Should we travel?
All right, um, request for bids, 2021-003 was closed on February 25th. Uh, only one bid was submitted. Uh, there's two possible explanations for this. One being what my report says, windstorm Yuri, but it really should be winterstorm Yuri. Uh, that was the week after that happened. So a, a lot of people were still recovering from that, uh, uh, water and electricity and ice event. Additionally, the, the project just may have been too small to generate interest in this hot construction market right now. Uh, so the bid that was received was in the amount of $98,945. That exceeds budgeted resources of $65,000. Uh, there's a couple of options that council can consider. Uh, rejecting all bids and just do a straight rebid of the project. Uh, the other op, another option is to reject all bids and to redesign and rebid the project. Or you can accept the bid and fund the difference. Right now, the upper trail crossing was designed to mimic the lower trail crossing, which was that basically a five-year storm event. The, the water would pass through the culverts, uh, without overtopping. Uh, if the culverts were, were made smaller, instead of being box culverts, they were made into pipes, uh, that may bring down the bid prices, actually should bring down the bid prices, prices. But it also increases the odds that, uh, during a lower storm event than the five-year, uh, perhaps maybe a two-year or a one-year event, that that crossing may be underwater more often. Uh, one thing to note, again, I, I've said this in other presentations that the, the water that comes into community park comes in real fast and leaves real fast. So the fact that it is underwater more often doesn't necessarily create a bad thing, uh, because once it stops raining, that water clears out pretty quickly. Uh, so with that, uh, staff recommends rejecting the bid or bid and then redesigning the project with smaller culverts. Uh, that will go out, a new bid package will be put together, advertised bid, and then hopefully come within budgeted resources. Uh, with that, I'll turn it back over.
Any questions or comments for Travis?
This is Mayor Pro Tim. Could this, could this project be included with, uh, some other project? Like with the tennis courts or redoing the trail that you're going to have that, moving the trail for the tennis courts? I mean, could you, this be included and maybe get the overall bid lower by making the project bigger, bigger? Just asking.
That's a possibility. Uh, I would, I would only be hesitant in that we're kind of mixing project specialties in that one is a tennis court and one is a drainage project. Uh, there could be some contractor out there that, that has the ability to do, uh, both of them. That would be my only hesitancy, but we could absolutely try it. Uh, my own, again, being hesitant, if, if both of them came in over, we'd have to go through this, this exercise again of how do we redesign one for another? Uh, now are we combining things that we can, uh, add or not add? I, I get, thinking on my feet, I would, I would also say that there's, there's a possibility that we put this in the tennis court bid as an add alternate. And if it, if it comes in too high, it just, it just goes away. Uh, we rebrand the entire project to Community Park Improvements. So there is that possibility.
Well, I, I guess I was, I was thinking more of the, uh, you're going to have to rebuild a part of the trail that, and, um, maybe that, that and this project could be its own project. The tennis court would be a separate project, but, uh, you'd have to, which would include some demolition of the trail. But the new trail to get around the tennis court and this project maybe could be a larger project. I'm just offering that up.
I would have directed, I guess, I think, I think there's a possibility to do it. Yeah, we can definitely do it that way.
I think that's a good idea. The concrete guys are pretty versatile on what they can do.
Anybody else? Are we ready for a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion. I move city council reject all bids, all one bid, uh, receiving for the, receive for RFB 2021-003 and instruct staff to redesign and rebid the project.
Is there a second?
Harold seconds.
Thank you, Harold. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, thank you. 9H, discuss, consider an act on a resolution supporting the 2021 Tarrant County Transportation Bond Program.
The resolution is a requirement of, uh, getting in the race regarding submitting your projects. Uh, we have two of them, the Blue Mountain Road Extension and the Keller-Hassett Road connecting SM156. Uh, in order for us to even be considered, we need to pass this resolution. The county looks favorably on both projects. So it's, um, it's, it's necessary to approve the resolution.
So this is Mayor Pro Tim with a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Is it possible they could approve both of them? And I seem like it approved neither of them also.
There's, there's, they can consider approving both, none or one of them. So there's a $10 million, it's $10 million project, project out $200 million. So I, I think it's the way the commissioner reacted and the way the county engineer reacted to the project, I think both would be strongly considered.
So, um, uh, we need to be.
If you get it approved, you can fund one. I'd like to have a sun both, but it's totally within your realm regarding which one to fund. Uh, I certainly wouldn't turn down both projects if they're approved by the, uh, the selection committee. Uh, and we're still two and a half years away from any improvement anyway. They have to have a bond election and then, you know, they've got to chart their way through $200 million of projects. Um, but you know, I mean, yes, there's, there's, there's three possibilities, both done or won, uh, on the, on the, on the resolution. It's just recommend that we, we try to get in the race and submit a resolution for both those projects and see what happens.
So we don't have to, there's no reason we need to find funding sources for these.
That's, we'll, we'll still work through that.
Okay.
This is just entering the projects into the county for consideration. I have a, a, a blue ribbon committee, so to speak, that evaluates and ranks all the projects. And this is just for them to rank our project.
I see.
Anyone else with a question or a comment?
Gary Halsey does.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. It's Gary Halsey, 2003, SM156 South, asset text. Just, I was just saying, this is, I'll say the, the first time that, uh, I appreciate you giving me opportunity here. And, and the only thing I have here, so we would have to find funding for $4.3 million for our responsible portion of it. And, uh, this is driven by, and correct me if I'm wrong, an interregional desire to move traffic, more traffic through Hasslet. Is that correct? Can someone respond to that?
I believe there were, Travis, do, do you have in front of you the criteria that was, uh, presented by the commissioner to, to the cities and, and the region? Because I, I think number one, it had to be on our, our MTP. Number two, uh, it would carry more weight if it, uh, if it helped with a regional solution. And in both these cases, uh, it would enhance our ability a, a, as the city of Hazlet to get Fort Worth traffic through Hazlet and not encumber our own citizens. So I, I don't, I think that might partially answer your, your question, Mr. Halsey. I, uh, Travis, if, if you have that criteria and can share it, if not, we can certainly get that to Mr. Halsey.
I guess my, my concern is, is that we are facilitating more traffic through Hasslet. That's, that's the issue. And, and what are we doing to try to put the burden on Fort Worth? Get your citizens maybe not through traffic? Is there a bypass that maybe could be considered? It's just, this is something that the citizens have not seen and understand that, uh, it's $4.3 million for us to move Fort Worth citizens through the area faster. That's into my comment. Thank you, Mayor. That's into my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Hillborn. The. The one of the projects would divert traffic. Out of Old Town. Would give a direct route. Out of on Keller Hasslet. That would divert it away from Old Town where now they come right down Main Street off of that road. So to me, this is a. This would be a a positive thing for our residents. To not have to experience that. And the other one is also something that would be beneficial to Hasslet, which is to extend Blue Mountain Road, which currently dead ends at Harmon on the east side of the town. Extend it out to the. To I thirty-five. It wouldn't, it would be the I thirty-five side road. But it would still be another route. East for our residents and would also benefit people coming on Blue Mountain Road. So it wouldn't. I don't think that that these projects in any way. Are creating a larger burden on Hasslet. I believe that they are lessening our burden.
I appreciate that comment and explanation. I just have the opinion we are inviting more traffic, making it an easier route. Thank you.
So this is Mayor Pro Tem. I maybe this is a question for Thad. Thad, it looks to me like both of these projects would have some favorable economic development potential. Have you thought about that?
Yes, sir. I was in those meetings and, you know, we've Jim and I have talked about it. And yes, those both open up additional land for development. They create the corners we talked about for commercial opportunities and traffic flow around those sites. So again. From my perspective, you know, we've done a lot of work on traffic analysis with Hasslet Parkway. The Fort Worth traffic is coming anyway. The BNSF yard is going to grow. Regardless of what Hasslet does, and that traffic has to have somewhere to go. So this is. You know, we've always looked at this as what is best for Hasslet, again, trying to route that traffic to places that make sense. So again, that that's just my perspective on, you know, working on Hasslet Parkway. And certainly looking at those those corners with major intersections and the opportunities those create.
Yes, this also would, I would think. The the Blue Mountain Road at the at the the service road of I thirty-five W. That corner would be a very desirable location, would be within the city. Maybe in the ETJ at the moment, but could be annexed. The city could very much benefit from that. You know, unlike Councilwoman Hillburn mentioned, the other one would get existing traffic. Truck traffic at that out of the center of Old Town. And give them a more direct route and also provide another corner for. Economic development at the north end of the city. So I'm for presenting both of these. Move forward with both of these to the county.
Anyone else with a question, comment?
Yeah, this is Jeff Armstrong, two oh eight Thistle. I mean, I just listening to this discussion. So all the, you've done all the analysis that this is going to be beneficial for Hasslet because it seems like a lot of opinion and I just I just didn't hear. You know, this might happen or this could happen. And it just seems like you could you could actually change Hasslet. Yeah, I don't know, but positively I hope, but I just don't see that that work's been put in. I I wish you guys would discuss more on what analysis you've actually had done or any surveys on how traffic would move. Because it seems like other communities are able to do that. I I think you're gonna invite a lot more traffic than you think is going to come through here. People trying to get around the mess and all of that. And I I just, so I'm I'm opposed unless there's more discussion on it. Thank you.
Does the speaker realize that we're not at this time committing to expending any funds or to agreeing to the projects? We're just asking the county to consider these two projects in their upcoming bond issue. And if they approve these projects, they will fit fifty percent of the cost of the projects. And when we find out whether or not we've been even approved for the project, then that's when the the more. Expert deliberation comes in when our our engineering staff gets involved with it and we can have some real. Some real numbers. Right now, it's just a drawing on a page and the county has said, yeah, we'll consider these projects down the road. If the council is interested. And what we're saying with this resolution, if we pass it this evening, is that we are interested. So I hope you'll stay involved in if this, we do get approval from the county. Then I would really appreciate your input, Mr. Mr. Armstrong, during that process as we go forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Mayor Pro Tem. Also, one of the stipulations is these roads are already on our master thoroughfare plan. Which is not dreamed up yesterday. It's been existing for some time and we have had. Studies to draft that master thoroughfare. Fair plan, so it's not something we woke up this morning and said, oh, let's put these in there.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem, maybe you ought to re-present that for the citizens then, just re-present those studies.
Yeah, and I I've just one last comment. I've only lived in Hasslet for three years. And when I moved here, I was told, oh, everybody lives on a half acre. I haven't seen a house put on a half acre since I moved here. So. I'm watching the city change. I could have lived in Fort Worth, but I chose to live in Hasslet. And so this is, that's why I'm opposed to this.
So in in three years, sir, you never saw a house built on in in North Glen?
Let's let's, I haven't seen a housing development go in where everywhere the houses are on a half acre.
I invite you to go look at North Glen. The other one is the vines. And yet several of the other developments have. Half acre. And also the other one, the single road there.
Yeah, you guys have answered my question. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Warren, I think you were talking about Bel Grande when we did a, we approved a preliminary platon recently. Those are all half acre lots. That's another new development that's in with half acre lots.
That's right. That's why I couldn't remember the name.
I apologize for my ignorance on it. I'm I live, I live in the meadows and it seems like everything that's going on around me is on tiny lots.
Are we ready for a motion?
This is Mayor Pro Tem. I move the city council approve the resolution. Supporting the twenty-twenty-one Tarrant County Transportation Bond. Authorize city staff to submit candidate projects and authorize funding participation for the candidate projects.
Is there a second?
Clark seconds.
Any further discussion? Warren Robb? Warren, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Okay, I saw you that time. Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Any more?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Nine I, discuss, consider an act on awarding a contract for City Hall beautification improvements.
Sorry, this is.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor Council, this is kind of tied in with the tap trail that we had placed, which runs from Odessa Drive. Up to past Old Town, up to Hurley Street. This is the old parking area that was in front of City Hall. The Type B board for the for the EDCs identified this area. It's a potential area for beautification. This area is funded, was funded through Type B funds, which is sales tax dollars. The Type B board also expressed a desire to have. This project go to a local Hasslet either firm or resident. So we sent it out to three local landscape companies. We also sent it out to four companies that were outside of Hasslet. We did receive three bids on it. Two of the bids that came in were from people that own landscape companies that are on the park board. So in reaching out to Rob to ask if that was, the city attorney to ask if that was acceptable. We did have them fill out the local government officer conflict disclosure statement. Those are included in your in your backup data there. And. We did have the landscape plan, landscape and irrigation plan. Designed by an act by a landscape architect. So with that, staff recommends approval of the estimate from Green Earth Services. And authorization to proceed with the work. With that, I'll turn it back over.
Mayor Council, this is city attorney. Mayor, sorry if I if I asked you that. Okay, just Travis did a great job in in that. Explanation, but just so we're clear, it's it's been a while since we've had this issue come up with a. A vendor who has put in a submitted for a proposal. Who has a business relationship with a local government officer, basically one of the board members. And so just as Travis explained, chapter one seventy-six in the local government code. Deals with that issue and and basically says. That the the law requires transparency and so that. The a disclosure statement has to be filed, which was done for both of the. Relationships for two of those vendors that one of the members is on the park board and. The other entity, I think it's a a spouse who's actually on on the park board. So what that that doesn't mean that that entity is is barred or or prohibited from getting the award. It's not that, that's not that type of conflict. It's just the law requires that that be disclosed. And be so that everybody's aware of that situation and can and that that's taken into account when council makes the award of of those contracts. So I just wanted to throw that out. If y'all have any questions on that, I'll I'll try and address those, but I hope that helps some.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions or comments for either of the presenters?
Yes, this is Kitty Wertz at two oh five Thistle Drive. And I just heard what our engineer said and what our lawyer said. And I I understand. That they say it's okay to have connections bid this project. But I didn't see the other three bidders and what their estimates were. So I don't know that you guys are being fully transparent. With the information you're putting forth. And I question. And a large concern, how in the world, less than eighteen hundred square feet. Of surface area could cost this amount? Our budgeted amount for this beautification was thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. That's exorbitant. For this amount. I mean, if you went to any homeowner in in our neighborhoods and we all have nice landscape. This isn't as big as my flower garden in front of my house. And I wouldn't even consider paying even the lowest bid of fourteen thousand dollars. I just don't think this is a good use of our city's money. And I think it truly needs to be relooked at again because it just doesn't feel right. I looked at landscape behind our community center and it's not even being taken care of. One question I have is do we have a gardener on staff who's going to take care of this landscape once we put it in? I saw weeds growing terribly in the back of the community center. So I again just question, is this really a good source of Hasslet's money? And I asked you, I know we want our our areas to look nice, but how does this benefit the cities, the citizens of Hasslet? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Travis, can't can't we answer her first question in that these are the three bids we received are the ones we requested? Is that correct?
I think we need more.
So yes, these are the bids out of the seven that we sent out that we've received. So we sent out three to local contacts and four to landscape companies within the area.
Did you send one to Fossil Creek?
Absolutely, I did, yes.
I'm surprised they didn't respond.
I am also surprised they didn't respond, but it may just be too small of a job. There could be many reasons why they didn't respond. I've actually been seeking bids for this since November last year. So we have put in the due diligence to try to get some bids on this job.
This is Gary Halsey. I have a comment, if you would, please.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary Halsey, two thousand and three FM one fifty-six Hasslet, Texas. You know, just based on the spread of these bids, there there's something wrong. I, you know, I saw the landscape plans. They look to be defined. And so I won't, you know, I can't go with, you know, the scope wasn't understood. So there's just something wrong here. If you initially budgeted thirty-eight thousand dollars and it comes in at half, it seems like they'll eat your lunch on change orders. But the spread among themselves is a. A ten thousand dollar spread on a fourteen thousand dollar bid between the first and second, and the between first and last is two hundred and seventy percent difference. I would urge you to go back and rebid this, maybe at another time. But also, is this a good time to be doing this? And you've got one fifty-six that's going to be rebuilt in front of that doorway? Which will certainly impact this beautification, I'm sure. That was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I think I can address that. So these improvements were specifically designed to take place behind the tap trail. With anything other than buffalo grass. So buffalo grass is going to go in front of the tap trail. And any type of improvement is going to be behind the improve, behind the tap trail. And through the sixty percent schematics. That tap trail is not going to be moved from where it's at right now. I believe Thad has some something to offer on this as well. Thank you.
Only that the, again, we did not have a budget. We had, the EDCs created a line item. It was actually carried over from last year's budget cycle. So again, this wasn't a. A budget where we had developed any detail. It was a request to finish the tap trail and the landscaping around City Hall. So. I just don't want people to get caught up on that thirty-eight thousand as that was a line item. It was not a a budget that was created specifically for this project.
Questions, comments? So just to reiterate, I I think you just explained it, Travis. The the tap trail, even if we widen one fifty-six in four years to to six lanes at this point. The tap trail remains in effect. So between the tap trail and City Hall, the building. This is where this landscaping will go in if if this is approved. And this is where it will remain after one fifty-six is widened. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Additionally, with the irrigation system, that's all behind the tap trail, between the tap trail and City Hall. Anything that's going next to the road is simply for visualization that you shouldn't drive there. That's why we've we've chosen buffalo grass there.
And again, this. Thirty-four thousand and change that Type B had in a line item. This wasn't specific to this project. There was no estimate made. It just happened to be a line item from which it was an appropriate expenditure. For this project. Is anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Mayor Pro Tem. I agree that this this sounds a bit expensive and I too was. And I too was kind of unable to explain the differences in these bids. I mean, some of them, the one was what, $34,000? And the low bid was 14, you know, what? I don't understand, and it's not a very, not a very big area, you know, why is there such a difference? And I don't even understand why it should cost 14,000. So I think we need to, I think we need to step back and take another look at this some point down the road.
So Jim, what do we do with the bids?
We, we can reject all bids, go back and redesign, see if we can get a lower bid. The specifications are pretty tight and concise. Some vendors will bid high, have enough work and say, hey, if you want to bid me that, I'll take it. You know, we, we can, we can, it's not a pressing matter, it's not an emergency. So if you want to go back and look, take a look at it again, we certainly can. We can certainly try to redesign the project for a lesser amount of plantings and things. City, City Hall beautification was a project to enhance the value of city facilities, just like landscaping around the library and landscaping around community center. It's a quality of life thing. As always, quality of life are things that are subjective. So we can certainly reject all bids and go out and bid again if that's what you desire.
Travis, can you go into a little bit more detail? I apologize. I'm having a hard time picking this up on my, on my iPad. Can, can you tell us what's, what's included in the $14,000 bid?
Yes, so the, the section between the existing roadway and the tap trail is just straight buffalo grass. The other items that are in there are dwarf myrtle plants, sage plants, Texas lantana, just kind of a grass plant, and then the purple winter creeper. So these are all, these are all plants that, that are on our current landscaping ordinance. I did run this plan through planning with a planning director, Wes Morrison, taking a look at it to make sure that everything on there was, was, was an approved plant. These are very similar plants to what is around parking lot right now. And we do, in the Parks Department, do try to take care of those plants as best we can. We're down two people right now. So I understand the frustration that there may be weeds there. But we're, we're, we work as, as best we can down two people. So these are all plants that fit within the climate, fit within what's around there now, do enhance City Hall. That's why we did go do, did go to a landscape architect to actually design this, to make sure that we weren't just putting something out there that was going to die or putting something out there that was going to take more effort than what we have available for staff. So that, that's what's going to, that's what is planned out there.
And it's irrigated, correct?
Yeah, that's, I was going to add that the irrigation itself is what, $3,750? I mean, I, I've had landscape plans drawn up before. And I know, just looking at it, it didn't seem, the 14,000 didn't seem extremely overreaching for me. So I'm, I'm good moving forward with the green earth services if that's, you know, what the council wants to do. I do think as you're walking the trail, whether it's coming from Odessa all the way down, having that aesthetics and the area in front of City Hall beautified is, is pleasing and does help with the, you know, the citizens and coming through. And as you're driving it every day, it's, it's nice to have the buffalo grass in front so people don't mistake that for, for parking still.
I agree with Councilmember Morrow.
Does, does somebody want to try a motion and we'll, we'll see how far we go?
Yes, I'll make a motion. I move city council approve the estimate for the City Hall beautification improvements project from Green Earth Services in the amount of $14,101.16. The ratification of funding in HCEDC Type B fund and authorize the work to proceed.
Is there a second?
Hilborn, second.
Hilborn, seconds. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
So I just want to point out that if this is approved, it will become out of Type B, not the general fund. But, but I'm going to, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. A nay for Warren Robb. Harold Williams? Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hilborn?
Hi.
Any more?
Hi.
Motion passes three, two. Nine J, discuss, consider an act, excuse mayor and council absences. Anyone have one coming up that you're aware of? Hearing number 10, receive report from Public Improvement District Subcommittee. Rob, anything to put out?
Real briefly, with tonight's action, the PID sub, the Sweetgrass PID eight is basically concluded from the PID Subcommittee standpoint. So it's up to council, if you want to continue to carry this update on the Subcommittee actions every meeting, that's fine. We don't have anything in the, in the works, I guess, now that the Sweetgrass is completed and we can bring this item back when there's action to conduct, or we can leave it on the agenda. It's totally up to you. I just thought I'd make you aware of that.
Thank you, sir. This is the mayor. I would say with, with that, we would just leave it off the agenda for, for future meetings. And then if there's ever something that we need to put on an agenda, we can certainly do that. But there's no reason to carry it if, if there's nothing to discuss in the future. So anyone have any dissenting comments on leaving it off the agenda from, from this point forward? Okay, let's go to number 11. Executive session, the city council reserves the right to go into, to, excuse me, to adjourn into executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding, regarding any item on the posted agenda as authorized by section 551071 of the Texas Government Code. Additionally, pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, city council may adjourn into executive session in accordance with the authority contained in 11A, section 551072, Government Code, deliberations about real property, property acquisition for Hasslet Parkway project. We'll close the open part of the meeting at 8:58 and I'll see y'all in exec.
Travis Siskirk, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I had to get on late.
This is Diana. Just realized this is still going to be recording even though we're not on here, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
How did the fire station parking lot item go?
We passed, so we're going to go forward with the engineering and bid package now.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
No problem.
I think I see everybody. Why don't we reconvene the open part of the meeting at 9:23? Number 12, consider and take any action resulting from executive session. There is none. Anybody have anything for future agendas? Hearing none, we're adjourned at 9:23. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Night.
Good night, everyone.